I know you do, Derek. I don't know if you know all my...
No.
I don't know the words.
Yeah, well, we just own them sometimes. So I'm going to give you a little bit of history. I'm trying to remember who this is. We have our bodies, our forms, our things, too.
I don't play no...
And it's...
I don't play no...
And I'm glad you showed up on the line.
Yep. Whatever, we're good. Test him.
Yeah, you have to test him in the front. It's also a good question.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Somebody's...
I don't know who you're working with.
Well, yeah.
I think I'm the one that's open. Steve, I think we made that two... Yeah. You would come up. Did you go? I was... I've said...
Yeah. I keep saying that for a long time.
So you're appointed to... Good evening. It's six thirty P. M. Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll call the meeting of the Port Jervis Common Council to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Thank you. A roll call, starting with Mr. Foster. Mr. Foster, First Ward Councilman, present.
Liz Miller, First Ward Council, present.
Maria Mann, Second Ward Council, present.
Stan Sable, Councilman Large, present.
Kelly Decker, Mayor, present.
Dennis Livingston, Third Ward Council, present.
Tim Simmons, Fourth Ward Council, present.
Melissa Newhauser, Fourth Ward Council, present.
William Worden, Chief of Police, present.
William Frank, Corporation Council, present.
Thank you. We're first starting off with our public hearing. This is a proposed local law, twenty twenty-three, regarding the bulk table for motor vehicles in the bottle. It has been posted online as well as in the conspicuous places that it needs to be. So I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. So motion by Mr. Siegel, second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion, all in favor. Opposed, so carried. So basically, the changes are to Section Two, which says motor vehicle sales to be insert directly above motor vehicle service in the table to reflect the minimum lot area requirement of thirty thousand square feet, a hundred square width, a hundred square foot depth, rear setbacks of twenty feet, maximum building height of sixty-five feet, and maximum lot coverage of sixty percent. This also did go through the Building Department. The second part is I. I. Bottle and can deposit redemption centers to be inserted directly above animal hospitals in the table to reflect no minimums for lot area width or depth, rear setback of twenty feet, maximum building height of seventy-four feet, and maximum lot coverage of a hundred percent. Does the council have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just go a quick...
Yes, sir.
Just so the council is aware... I don't have a mic, Ken. That's good. I like you. Just so the council is aware, the proposed bulk table requirements for the motor vehicle sales are the same as they were in the other zones. It just wasn't carried over to insert them into the bulk tables when we did the lot and the bottle and can redemption centers. This recommendation comes from the Building Department. And this is essentially, we're not going to reduce seeker. This is essentially updating the code that was already adopted. And the seeker was done within that. So I think we're okay.
Okay, very good.
I have one question. I heard on the radio, I don't know how true it is, that the state of New York is not contributing to the bottled redemption anymore. Have you heard that?
I heard there's going to be some contributions reduced if not eliminated, and it's making it very hard for bottle and can redemption centers to sustain their businesses.
Right.
And really, that's a separate issue from changing, so.
Right.
That would be something for the operator or dealer.
Just, yeah.
Yes.
Any other comments by the council?
I, yeah, I'm not sure if I'm having a brain cramp or not. Where, where are we with the, the dog grooming thing? Was that, wasn't it?
That's not.
I thought that, yeah, okay. That was not a part of this.
No, we did that.
No, I'm just changing the definition.
Right, right. And that, we always took care of.
That was taken care of.
Right. I thought so, but I wasn't reading. Sometimes stuff's lost by...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Your question.
It's either three or four. Local, here, or one.
Yeah. Anybody from the public? Just the proposed local law, twenty twenty-three, bulk tables?
Nope.
I'd just like to indicate that when we took a trip to the people that want to do it on Orange County, it was very clean operation, surprisingly clean operation. And one certain business, whatever the state does, the state does for one certain business, this should help reduce the amount of recycles that we take to landfill and hopefully the amount of recycles that get thrown around and in the wrong places. So it can't be bad. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So motion by Mr. Livingston, second. Second by Mr. Simmons. Discussion, all in favor. Opposed, so carried. Thank you. We have some mayoral appointments. The first is the police chaplain, a new police chaplain that we have here, Reverend Jose Rodriguez. If you would like to chief introduce him. And we're going to do a little swearing in for our police chaplain.
Excellent.
Good evening. It's my privilege tonight to introduce to you Pastor Jose Rodriguez. He is here tonight with his wife Kimberly to be sworn in to replace Pastor Tom Zradnik, who was our long-term police chaplain. Pastor Jose came highly recommended by Pastor Tom as his replacement for this much-needed program for not only the police department, but for our community. Pastor Jose is the lead pastor at the Goodwill Church. He is our pastor at the Port Jervis Goodwill Church. And he has been with Goodwill Church since two thousand and eleven. A couple of things that I want to talk about to the council tonight that Pastor Jose brings with him is he's a credentialed alcoholism and substance abuse counselor. He's a certified mental health coach. And he's got extensive experience in pastoral counseling to provide care during critical incidents for not only officers, but community members when needed. The way chaplains work in a police department, and probably similar with the fire service, is they are non-denominational. They act in a non-denominational capacity to provide that counseling and emotional support needed to members of the department, their families, and members of the public without financial compensation, which provides a solid foundation of support for our wellness program. To assist members, what a chaplain will do is visit sick and injured members at the hospital or at their home. They'll attend and participate in funerals of retired members. They will serve as a resource for our members and their families during significant incidences. Just to be able to be a police officer and be able to talk to the chaplain in confidence about something that I witnessed or observed is very important, you know, for my mental health and my wellness. And also chaplains serve as resources to provide officers with guidance and counseling, you know, if they're having family problems or emotional problems because of what the job can bring to them. Assisting the department, a chaplain can be called upon to help diffuse a major conflict or incident that we are working on in the community. They can also provide assistance during major incidents like a natural disaster or a major crime or accidental deaths, things like that, because chaplains can ensure that we are accomplishing our mission of serving the public in a compassionate way. Chaplains also can attend city ceremonies and social events, offering invocations, benedictions as requested. Chaplains participate in our in-service training. I know our pastor has done some in-service training with us already. And very important to us is pastor can train us as well and provide an in-service training to the department. And for our community, chaplains help with fostering familiarity with the role of what law enforcement and community are together. They provide a bridge in many cases, a link to the community, other chaplain coordinators with the department, and they can be an excellent liaison with various civic and business organizations and our religious and faith-based organizations in the community. So it is my honor and privilege to ask our city clerk to come up and administer the oath of office to Chaplain Jose.
Chaplain, if you could come up here, please.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, so please bring in, I, Jose Rodriguez.
I, Jose Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the state of New York.
The laws of the state of New York.
And the city of Port Jervis.
And the city of Port Jervis.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police chaplain.
Of the office of the police chaplain.
Of the city of Port Jervis.
Of the city of Port Jervis.
To which I'm about to enter.
To which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I just need to say...
Chaplain. Yeah?
Just while they're doing that, the appointments that I'm going to make for civil service, we had a position of resignation, and I received a request from Joe McBride. So I am appointing Joe McBride to civil service. We had a vacancy on I. D. A. from a resignation, and I will be appointing Jackie Smith to that position. And I had a request from Thomas Enright, also known as Tucker, to the tourism board, and I will be appointing him to the tourism board. So those are the appointments made tonight. Next, we have a presentation, Mr. Jim Blanton from the Tree Commission.
Can I just say, I'm really sorry. Chaplain, you just say a few words to the council.
Absolutely, absolutely. Hold on.
Sorry, Mr. Blanton.
Now, don't upstage me. It's only going to take two seconds. I just want to thank you for this appointment, and I just look forward to see how we can work together. And at our, at my location, where I serve, right, I am one of the only pastors who's willing to put my cell phone number available to the public. So I am available for whatever you need. And again, I just look forward to serving Port Jervis.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Try to beat that one, Jim.
So we have, uh, what we want to present.
I'll hold on, Jim, just one second, please.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'll fix the...
Okay, so your announcement is to appoint her to be a member of the I. D. A.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you please clarify that, too?
Yes, yes. It's not the I. D. A. committee. She's a member of the I. D. A.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, take it. I'm here with a few members of the Tree Commission, several back in this corner or a couple over here. And we want to present what we're calling our green space statement of intent with the idea that maybe we can build more collaboration with city council, apartment heads, and, and work together in a collaborative way towards green spaces. So we'll go through that very quickly in a minute, and most of you have a copy. Before that, a very quick history. Our group was originally formed under the name Adopt a Tree in twenty twelve. And then we were, in twenty seventeen, the city council appointed us to fill in for what was in the defunct Shade Tree Commission. So that kind of became our new title. And in that period of time, we planted about two hundred trees and shrubs around the city of Port Jervis. We're a group of fifteen volunteers. We do receive occasional small private donations, but are mostly funded out of our own pockets. We're a group of busy people, so we usually only meet three or four times a year as a full group. And that usually means getting out and doing some planning and then a short meeting afterwards. In between, we stay in touch by email. We take on different projects that we do. In between meetings, a lot to be done to maintain the trees pruning and watering and so forth. And we have our water brigade. We've got several members of the water brigade here who during the dry season will keep the... For two years, we found that trees need to be watered until they're more established. So a lot of things that we do in between meetings individually. A few things that we've learned in terms of planting trees, to be very conscious of the appropriate size and type of trees so that you don't ruin or encroach on sidewalks or roadway access or interfere with power lines above. We've learned that certain trees are hardier than others and tend to last. Some trees are really beautiful, but after a couple of years, despite our efforts, they don't make it. So we've learned to look for hardy trees and then, as I said, to keep those watered for a couple of years. There have been a lot of challenges. There's, of course, disease, drought. Our first couple of years, there was a lot of vandalism. You'd be surprised how many kids would just pull the trees up or break the limbs off. Fortunately, these days, we see very little of that. So I think the kids have just got, hopefully, gotten used to seeing trees, and it's not a novelty anymore. I have personally replanted up to seven times the same tree. So I think we won that battle. Also, there have been a problem with city mowers in the summertime. They mow and weed whack, basically kill the trees from bumping them with oaks or the roots. So we learned to put these corrugated plastic covers around them. That seems to protect them and help that go better. So that's just a little bit of our history. And before we quickly go through this statement of intent, I've been what we call the coordinator. We haven't really made formal presidents and vice presidents and all these sorts of things. Stanley has been with us since the very beginning. And Tom, I think, and Dawn for about that long. Others are more newcomers, Tony for quite a long time. So I've been the coordinator for these years. And fortunately, Derek Vitum, who, Videm, I pronounced the name correctly, who's joined us more recently, is willing to kind of take over that coordinator role. So we're going to have some more discussion about that. I'll still be involved. I'll still show up and plant trees and buy some trees and do things. But I think it'll be good that Derek will, he has a lot of energy and a lot of ideas. And I think it's good to bring in new people to help him and things for it. So I asked Derek to just say a couple of quick words about some of his ideas for the future. And then we'll just quickly go through this statement of intent.
Good evening, council. Don't mind my typed text. I'm not a great public speaker. My name is Derek Videm. I've been serving on the Tree Commission for a little over two years. For those of you who are familiar with me, you know I'm dedicated to make, help making our city a more beautiful place. The progress we've witnessed here over the last few years has been nothing short of amazing. However, I do believe that our landscapes and gardens should be on par with this progress. I've had the privilege of leading an exceptional team of volunteers who have dedicated their time and effort to the Promenade Gardens. For the past ten weeks, we've worked tirelessly to bring new life into these spaces and to create an environment that captures the essence of our little thriving city. It is with this determination that I plan to continue Jim's vision for the Tree Commission. Together, we have an opportunity to make our city an even more green place to live, work, and thrive. Let's harness our collective energy, creativity, and dedication to ensure that our landscapes match the astounding progress that our city has achieved. Let's pave the way for a future where every corner of our city radiates beauty. Thank you for your time, your commitment, and your shared vision. As we move forward, I'm excited to collaborate with all of you to further elevate our city's aesthetics. After all, we are a designated Tree USA city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I must say, Derek and I communicate a lot back and forth, and you've done a fabulous job, especially with the Promenade. Thank you. A lot of hard-handed work, a lot of it, yeah. Okay, if we could look, I think most of you have a copy of this green space. Did you guys? I've got a couple more. I think you've got one online. Okay. The idea here is, this is not a legal document. It's not legally binding. We don't have legal standing. We can't insist on that anything be done or not be done in the city. We're just a bunch of volunteers who want the city to be beautiful and healthy. But we do feel like that our voices should be important, that we should be collaborated with and listened to. And when possible, given a chance to maybe have input or discussion on things, we're also not a group of crazy people who believe you can't ever cut any tree or going to chain ourselves to some tree that you've got to cut to bring in the road or something. But we do think we could do better as a community, working collaboratively. So that's what this is about. So we spent time coming up with these ideas, and we're hoping that basically the council agree with us on these ideas and that this could be the basis of a plan that we mutually do to try to make our city better. So beginning, the definition. We define green space as parks, trees, vegetation, lawns, riverbanks, and streams within our city limits. Our rationale here is that abundant and diverse green space is essential to building a beautiful, healthy, and vibrant community. Ample and well-maintained green spaces builds community pride and engagement and attracts visitors, investors, shoppers, and new residents to the community. I was one of them when I first came to the city, and I saw a bunch of large trees that had been planted. And I thought, well, this is maybe a place I might want to live. There are physical health benefits, and you can go online. There's a lot of documented information about this. And I have, I have some show and tell here for fun. If you want, after the meeting, a few photos and articles in the paper and some old flyers that we did. And then over here, there are several copies of a really good article that tells about why trees are important. If you want to take one of those, please do. But just a quick synopsis. Health benefits, improved air quality, lower environmental toxicity, reduce noise pollution. Don't underestimate that. Increased shade can improve temperature control, residential and commercial. And mental health benefits, reduce stress and anxiety, and increase sense of connection to the community. So trees and green spaces are important. Principle one, we, I didn't know this until just a couple of years ago. We're not only a designated Tree City, Tree City USA community, we're also part of the Orange County Greenway Compact. I didn't know what that was. It's a whole book full of stuff that I read, and it's very good stuff. And I don't think anybody knows we're part of it much. So we need to really look again at these. I mean, obviously, this has all been presented and adopted by the council at some point. So let's revisit some of these things. Obviously, we're a city of immense natural beauty and resources. There's no place more beautiful than Port Jervis. There's no place. And we have residents who value and honor the natural resources. And then we feel it's the responsibility of the community and the, and the city leadership to come, to care for and enhance green spaces, including maintenance, thoughtful expansion of parks, wilderness trees, riverbank streams, wildlife, and plants. We all feel we have a responsibility towards this. Principle two, to help us reach the goal of principle one, the, we're asking that the leadership of the city consult and whenever possible, collaborate. Sometimes there, things have to be done quickly, but as much as possible. With all the key constituents, we've got here the D. P. W., Department of Parks and Recreation, the Outdoor Club, and ourselves, the Tree Commission. We feel all of us need to consult. And we really try, whenever we're doing anything that's at all new or whatnot, I try to always go over to John or, or over here to one of the guys at D. P. W. and make sure we're together on it. And I'll say they've been good collaborators. So we feel that if all of us be, could, could be consulted together, we might come out with a better product and, and be more, you know, satisfied as a community. And then just that the leadership maintain committees, organizations, staff, so forth, as needed. We have a Tree Commission. That's a good start. We have an Outdoor Club, very active, these sorts of things. I also, we've never had any budget in, in, in the city budget at all. We have to pull it out of our pockets. I'm suggesting here, this isn't a formal vote that we're asking for it now, but I do think that the city should put some modest budget. It could be a hundred, it could be a thousand bucks or something, some token amount in there, partly to show that we're serious about trees and green spaces, and then we're not having to pay for everything out of our own pockets. And I will tell you, we can do a lot with a thousand bucks. You'd be amazed. All right, quickly then, points of action. Sufficient ball fields and open play areas maintained with introduction of trees, shrubs, and other green features. John has mentioned so many places that he thinks we could put a row of trees here. We just put a little row down at the beach for shade because the people have complained about that. Open spaces enhanced with wildlife areas whenever we can, native species, forest reclamation. There are a lot of places where we've gone in and we've cut down or thinned out forest land. And I know sometimes there have been areas, Carrie, Kelly has mentioned some issues that we've had to deal with. But in general, if we could just let nature take its course, and even if it's tiny little sections of forest land or just native land, we may have to go in and take out some invasives now and then. And we, you have people here who will help do that. We'll show up with choppers and whatnot and help do it. But if we could have more natural wooded land in our city, we've got this wonderful, all the watershed trails. But right here where we live, we could have more of that. And, and this, we recently did the sidewalk on the Pike Street. Beautiful sidewalk. But a lot of people were upset because a lot of trees were cut, healthy trees. And some of those, some of us planted. We bought them, we planted them, we watered them, pruned them for years. And we felt that if we planned ahead, few, if any, of those trees, I mean, sometimes some of them may have to be cut, but most of them could have been saved. But by the time we saw what was happening, it was too late. It was already, you know, under contract, and they couldn't change anything. So we've lost all those trees, and we had these tiny little holes there that aren't big enough to support a tree that they left us. So if we could avoid things like that in the future, and it has happened here. We did all the sidewalk for the schools. Remember that project? We did it up and down East Main and all the way out Kingston. I was contracted out of the blue. They had hired a tree specialist, and I walked around with him. And, well, we could save that, and, well, this one's dying, it should go. And we walked around, and they saved a bunch of trees when they did that. So we could do it again. So just that planning, that we be brought into that as much as we can. Try to keep invasion species down. And public education, I've got some great pictures here of a couple programs where we've gotten kids to help us plant trees. It's been great. So these are our ideas. These are what we think should be priorities for our city. Any questions or comments?
Jim, I'd just like to say thank you for your time and effort in, in your role for the Tree Commission. And Derek, you have some really big shoes to cover here, although...
But he's got some really big feet, so.
Yes. But it's good, it's good to see that you're not just leaving. You're going to stay and offer your expertise along with, with the, with the Tree Commission. And I agree. I think it is incumbent upon the city to, to have some skin in the game and, and in some way, when we look at the budget, to come up with...
Just very modest.
With, with something that it shows that we're invested and that, that there is value there. And, and you're right, you know, a thousand dollars in, in your hands can go a long way. And, and it's something that we need to, we need to do. So again, thank you for your time and effort and all the people that are on the commission. It, it does make a difference.
Are there any of our members that came that just have any comment or anything to make?
I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that keep an eye on your own yards and trees. For the past three weeks, I've been killing spotted lanternflies. They're around.
They're all around.
I'm finding them on sumac trees mostly, and they love fruit trees of any kind, any sweet sap trees. What's been working for me is a handheld vacuum. And I take the filter out and, because they chop. Hit the larvae, hit the, hit the moths themselves, and then I empty it right in a bucket of soapy water. But just right up here on Sausage Street, I've been finding my birds. I did report it to D. E. C. three weeks ago. And really, all I got back from them was how to go about killing them. go about killing them, so they're aware.
Well, there, did you say, there was some by the river that they, I think they had to take some trees out down there?
Yeah.
And same thing on the toll path.
Yeah.
Like he said.
Sumac. Sumac.
Just like to take a moment and thank you, Jim, and the committee as well, but particularly you, because I know that you make every effort when you go out on a planting or a tour or a trip, to include everybody, and there are times when sometimes the only people that went out was you. So, thank you, and the city looks better for it. I get a lot of comments about Pike Street, and you're absolutely right, the kind of trees that are going to fit in those holes will just tear up the sidewalks.
Well, we have, we have a plan.
Kelly and I made a plan, and I think we'll make the best of it.
And cutting the trees down and from whatever, but the efforts that the committee made are noticed by many people, and I'm glad that you're staying, and I hope that you continue to be the refreshment chairman.
Oh, yeah.
Derek, after every meeting, he invites people to his porch. Not so much for the refreshments or the conversation, but while having the conversation, we have refreshments, so if you'd stay on as refreshment chairman.
I believe in variety of food.
Thank you very much for what you've done.
Well, and Stanley has been out there, I mean, digging and scraping and doing the hard stuff since the very beginning. We've kind of become the senior contingency now in the group, so I really appreciate you.
Well, in two weeks, I can dig the gas.
I'd like to thank you also, Jim, and the rest of the committee. Promenade looks really, what a difference down there, and we really like it.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for that.
I only helped a little bit, some of these others have put a lot more time into it than I did.
How many weeks have you put in there?
Ten, this week.
Ten, yeah, for ten.
Yeah, and it shows. So I'd like to thank all of yous, because, you know, you guys do things and nobody notices until, you know, all of a sudden, oh, why was that tree taken down? But we notice, and I'd like to thank you, the whole committee.
And you will start to see trees going up in the Promenade, too, so we talked about that. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Have a great day.
Okay, public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment? Not anything. Laura Meyer.
I don't have a speech, I'm sorry. Laura Meyer, Port Jervis Tourism. I just want to thank everybody who came out and made the Bella Note Italian Festival this Saturday a wonderful event. The weather held out, I think it was the best one yet.
It was fabulous.
It's really growing and becoming as Italian as we can, we're trying to do our best to keep it that. We chased away Jamaican food vendors, you know, there was some other interesting things, but we're trying to do our best. But I want to thank everybody who made it possible. I want to thank the council, the mayor, for voting to have it every year, and we do appreciate it. I want to thank the DPW for their work in getting extra toilet paper when the Porter John's. And also the tourism board members that came out to help, Regis, Marie, Melissa, Jackie, Sean, Tucker, and I forget anybody, I apologize. And then we had a lot of extra effort put in there. We had a sign that was created for Sal boys for the event, and it was absolutely beautiful, it was breathtaking. And he went to take his, Sal went to take his picture in front of it, probably a split second before the generator ran out of gas, and I'm the only one, I think they got a picture. But thank you for that. And the extra effort that was made by Marie Mann also, and there was a few other people who made the extra effort. Misty had did the embroidery for the sash for our queen of the feast, Catherine Westfall, and she did her job very well. I told her, when she asked, what do I need to do, I said, just look pretty. She did a good job of that, and for recognizing also Mount Carmel Society. So we plan on doing it again next year, August 17th. I hope you like the entertainment this year, because we love them, and we want them to come back. So thank you, everybody. In case I forgot, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lord. Anyone else from the public? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Hold on a second. I have one invite for Chief Warden on personnel, I have five securities with an invite of city clerk Laura Quick, and three contractual matters.
Three, no?
Yeah, I added it.
Okay.
So, motion by Mr. Simmons, second. Second by Ms. Newhauser. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. That is soon weekend.
If you're going to stay, I would take a chair out into the hallway.